Mr. McKay.
Evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mr. Dinenza.
This is Hoff.
Mr. Cuff. Ms. Cook Henry, Mr. Miguel. And with the snappy haircut. Did you go for that haircut? That wife cut your hair.
I went out for a haircut.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Jan's family's clippers is who my family has been using.
She, she, the last night she did, she was like, no, I can't do yours anymore. She does the kids, though.
Sarah did Jacobs. Understood, Mr. Cuff.
We're going to draw those numbers tonight. I may not be available for the meeting next week.
Okay. What'd you say? I'm sorry, Bill. I was looking at Mr. Dr. B. Coats' report.
No, I said after they draw those numbers tonight, I may not be able to make next week's meeting.
Oh, you mean you're my new best friend?
And don't forget you adopted me as your daughter.
I've already printed out applications to be my friend. I'll be sending them out shortly.
Oh, boy. Hello, Ms. Gina. Hello, attendees. All right, do we? We're just missing Boykins, right?
And Mr. Wright.
Yeah. All right, we'll give it two minutes. We'll get started. Six thirty-three. Mr. Dinenza, can you post a link to Dr. B. Coats' presentation, please?
Yes, ma'am, it's listed. Miguel sent it. We'll post it again.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
It's all good. It's quite a long message with a lot of links.
Yeah, you know, I don't know. That checkbox's not too reliable. But that'll be okay. Oh, McKay. All right, let me get these windows organized.
Hey, Jen, you will have to read my agenda for me if you don't mind, because I'm driving.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. First thing is pledge of allegiance, please. Mr. Cuff? I pledge allegiance. Of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which stands. One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible. With liberty. Justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Cuff, roll call, please.
Here we go. Ms. Boykins? She's there.
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan.
Present.
Ms. Cook Henry.
Present.
Ms. Ivory.
Present.
Ms. Richardson. You're muted. You can wave. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tong.
Present.
Mr. Wright is absent. Ms. Hopkins.
Here.
And Ms. Hoff.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cuff. I turn the table over to Dr. B. Coats for his presentation, please.
Sure. Good evening, Board of Directors and to our attendees. Thank you for joining us this evening. Just have a few highlights I want to share with the board. So I'm getting ready to share my screen. And I will walk through a couple of items for the board. You should see in front of you something that says Agenda. And I hope you do. Very good. And so these are the five items that I just want to highlight tonight. And we'll address any board member questions that that may come up. So just some good news from our schools. Most of you know that we welcome back our low-incident students into our buildings today, or five of our buildings today. And I did have the opportunity to visit two of the schools. The William. Pinewood High School, Green Avenue Campus. And then I did have the opportunity to go to Ardmore. And just wanted to share with the board and our public, this were, these were our two teachers, two of our life skill teachers. And this was a sign that they had, and they were on their way out to the bus to welcome students. Overall, I believe that today was a good day. We did have some, a few bus concerns that we have addressed and are addressing. And we have confirmed that all of our students did arrive back to their home location safely as it relates to transportation. So I did want to share with the board this information, and I'll share with you in a moment what our numbers look like today. In terms of attendance, these were the numbers of students who actually attended in-person instruction today. Also want to let you know that tomorrow and Thursday, we will have a different group of students who will be attending, because we're doing the AA, I'm sorry, it's the ABCD groups of, groups of students. So I just wanted to make the board aware of that. Another factor that we definitely keep taking into account is teacher attendance as well. And I do want to recognize our teachers and our parents, as well as our administrators, who are diligently supporting our students through this pandemic. And just wanted to share with the board the numbers, staff members, and those who may have been absent today. So we're still maintaining anywhere around a ninety to ninety percent or higher attendance rate for our teachers. And I do want to say thank you, thank you for your diligence. As always, we try to make sure that we keep the board updated with our Chester County Health Department data. So the first chart here outlines the incidence rates per one hundred thousand. So you can see over the last four weeks, that number has continued to decline. And you'll note the same for our positive COVID percentages. That number continues to decline over the last four weeks, with again, one, week one being the most recent week. So if we look at this data a little bit closer, you will see the data for our actual district. And just give me a second, because they've reformatted this page now that they're adding information. And let me just share that. This is an update, because the county is providing information on vac, on vaccinations, with the administration of vaccinations for Delaware County, as well as Chester County. So that information is right here on the screen, and that is something new that was just included, I believe, in last Friday's update. And I will talk about vaccinations momentarily. So when I look at the incidence rates for our actual area, being William Penn, you will, excuse me, you will note that this number is continuing to go down, which is what we like to see. And I just highlighted those numbers in blue. And again, the four weeks here are our positive test counts. And then here, the numbers are our incidence rates per one hundred. So I wanted to make sure that we did share this information with the board and with our public. Also, I wanted to share some information about vaccinations. So we are, we had another meeting today with all the superintendents in Delaware County. And the county has made an effort to ensure that there are locations available for us to, or for them to administer, if you will, the vaccinations. However, the challenge is, is that the county does not have an ample supply of vaccinations. And so the plan that the county has put into place is to start vaccinations on February the thirteenth. But that cannot happen without the proper resources. So as a group of superintendents, we are starting our, if you will, advocacy campaign to our state delegation, as well as to the Pennsylvania Department of Health. Because we feel very strongly that we need to be ready to begin the vaccinations on February the thirteenth, as the plan has, is outlined. However, the county needs help in obtaining the actual vaccines themselves. So this is a letter that I am addressing to all of the families in our district, asking them to help us in that effort of advocacy. And so I wanted the board, the board to be aware of our actions. I will be sharing this with our teachers, as well as with our staff. I have reached out to the union president and vice president, and I've shared this information with them as well. I feel very strongly that we should not be an afterthought when it comes to Group 1B being able to be vaccinated. And I think the larger challenge that we face is you have individuals in neighboring counties, sometimes people working in the same building that you do, who are being vaccinated. And that's a function of the fact that there are some challenges with the implementation of vaccinating our community. So we feel very strongly as a group of superintendents that we should continue to advocate on behalf of, on behalf of, on behalf of all of our staff members, as well as our families. So I wanted to share that with the board. And then I'm going to go to two more items, I believe. And then I'll open it up for any questions that the board may have. Switching to a totally different subject, as most of you know, we are continuing our efforts to implement our strategic plan. Should say develop our strategic plan. So I just wanted to remind individuals of focus group sessions that we have set up. And you will see here that we are looking forward to individuals participating. And so on January the twenty-sixth, we have a special session specifically for teachers. And we want to hear you. We want your voice to be a part of this process. So this is a time and date where we have for you to give us feedback and input about the development of our strategic plan. You can see here that we do have other dates set for other individuals to participate. And do not limit yourself to a session, just if it says a group that you're not a part of. Keep in mind that we're never going to turn anyone away. We want to hear from you. And we also have one open session on February the twentieth, and that is a Saturday, I believe. And that was done purposely, so that we could make sure that we gave everybody an option to, to participate. So you will continue to hear more information about the development of our strategic plan as we go through this process. And board members, that concludes my update tonight, and would like to, or can entertain or try to address any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. B. Coats. Any questions from the Board of School Board Directors? Hearing and seeing none, any questions from attendees? All right, you'll have other opportunity. Remember, raise your hand or put it in the Q and A, please.
You have two that's in the Q and A.
They've been resolved. Are you not seeing them resolved? Okay. Go through the agenda first or the motion first? Dr. B. Coats.
If you would, Ms. Hoff, could you go to the motion, please?
Sure, happily. I'm going to read this. I'm going to read the resolution, and then I'll go to the motion, okay?
Thanks.
Where, the motion is a... Where is the motion? I might be looking at the wrong agenda. Someone could just let me know while I read it. All right, resolution to vaccinate our educators now by the Board of Directors of the William Penn School District. Whereas the William Penn School District Board of School Directors desires to record in the minutes of its regular meeting a resolution with, of respect and safety for all educators in the William Penn School District. And whereas the superintendents of Delaware County, along with the Chester County Health Department and the Delaware County COVID Task Force, force, have developed a vaccination plan for our staff, starting February thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. And whereas all plans have been submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Health, have been vetted through the local school leaders, and have accounted for the details associated with such an enormous effort. And whereas we know that receiving the vaccine is voluntary for our staff, but we simultaneously realize that this mitigation effort is impactful when it comes to opening our schools to a greater degree for all of our students. And whereas we have been advocating for the proper amount of vaccines, so we can begin to better secure, secure our schools. And whereas we have not been allotted the necessary doses just to begin our plan. And whereas we have not been given a single dose as of today. Now therefore be it resolved that the William Penn School, School District Board of School Directors calls upon the General Assembly to secure the proper amount of COVID nineteen vaccines in order to vaccinate our educators now. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution will be submitted to the elected senators and representatives of the William Penn School District in the General Assembly and to the Governor of Pennsylvania. May I have a motion to approve that?
Shall move.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns from school board directors? Okay, hearing none. I, is there, I can, I'm sorry, can you guys direct me to the motion in our agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. Cuff is going to do that.
Sorry, I didn't get a chance to look.
That's all right. It's actually on the front of the meeting of the committee of the whole agenda.
It's sent to you.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It was just on the screen. Warren, can you put it back on the screen, please?
Well, someone was sharing their screen, and I saw it there.
Okay. I, I can get it. My, uh, I got it. All right, here's the motion. The motion is to adopt a resolution calling upon the General Assembly to secure the proper amount of COVID nineteen vaccines in order to vaccinate our educators now. May I have a second? I, I move in a second, please.
Shall move.
Second.
Second, Ms. Richardson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Okay, can I, can I ask that, uh, school board directors take themselves off of mute and say aye, please?
Aye.
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 Right, anyone against? Thank you very much. Okay. Now to our regular scheduled agenda. Community relations. A one, and I'll read this also. A one, Black History Month proclamation. Whereas in the year nineteen twenty-six, Mr. Carter G. Woodson, Black historian and founder of the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History in American Life, proposed Black History Week. And whereas Black History Month was established in nineteen seventy-six, is sponsored by the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, and is observed for the entire month of February. The Association for the Study of African-American Life and History has selected the twenty twenty-one Black History theme as the Black Family: Representation, Identify, and Diversity. The Black Family has been a topic of study in many disciplines: history, literature, the visual arts and film studies, sociology, anthropology, and social policy, for exploring the African-American past and present. And whereas, in order to carry on the tradition, Mr. Woodson began, Black History Month is observed to inform and educate people about the history of African-American men and women, and the contributions they have made to American life and culture. The yearly themes reflect changes in how people of African descent in the United States have viewed themselves, the influence of social movements, and the historical importance of race relations in America. Special programs and activities in the schools of the William Penn School District will commemorate the study of African-American life and history. Now therefore be it resolved that this Board of School Directors of the William Penn School District hereby proclaim the month of February as Black History Month for the year twenty twenty-one. Resolve this day, the twenty-fifth of January, and the motion will be to adopt the William Penn School District Black History Month proclamation. A two is the kindergarten preregistration for the twenty-one twenty-two school year, which begins on March first. Please register early, and remember, your child must be five before September first, twenty twenty-one. A three, the William Penn School District twenty twenty-one twenty-five strategic planning process. Three overarching priorities are cohesiveness, academic excellence, efficiency, and effectiveness. And as Dr. B. Coats stated, there are six focus groups. Please participate in as many as you like. A four, a student was selected for the twenty twenty Young Authors Project. Congratulations. Jala Cunningham, a student at Pinewood Middle School, was selected as the winner of the Dr. Nicholas Spinato Young Authors Project for twenty twenty. Her winning entry was submitted as a project as a sixth-grade student at Walnut Elementary. Kudos to both schools and Ms. Cunningham. A five, Harkam Dental Center is offering Free Sealant Day on February fifteenth. You must call to register or email, so please do. A six, Delaware County School Age COVID Childcare COVID Support. There is money for school age childcare due to COVID. The link is, and I'm going to say it, ccpnpa.org/covid-support for more information. Please don't leave that money on the table. Take it if you need it. Snap EBT is accepted for food purchases on Amazon, so now you can get your food on Amazon, too. It's a shame it took a pandemic. Any questions from the Board of School Directors? Any questions from the public? All right, thank you. Ms. Boykins is driving, so I'll read her agenda now.
Excuse me, Ms. Hoff. Ms. Miller, has her hand raised? Do you want me to go to that or do you?
Yes, please. Thank you for letting me know. Ms. Miller, you can speak now.
Thank you. Just really quick question. Can you repeat where, or can you just tell me where at and find that information about childcare money that's available?
Happily. It's also in your agenda, which...
And the agenda is also on the website, right?
Correct. If you go into chat, there's a link to it.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Okay, thank you, Mr. D'Enzo. Okay, education. B1, a memorandum of agreement with the Chester County Health Department for antigen testing. B2, a release and settlement agreement regarding student last four nine three two one. And that is all for the education agenda. Any questions from the Board of School Board Directors? Okay, seeing none. Any questions from the public? Well, thank you for putting that link in, Mr. D'Enzo. Mr. Pardini asks a question. Concerning the ACID program, will staff health data be identified or otherwise shared with CHOP or any health agency? I'm right in the motion, Mr. Pardini. It tells you. Can I, can someone answer that question in writing for Mr. Pardini, please?
Sure.
I know I read it, and it's a cut and paste, but it doesn't appear to be in the agenda motion. I apologize for that, Mr. Pardini. We'll get you that answer. Okay. Personnel, Ms. What do you, Ivory, please?
Good evening. The superintendent recommends the following personnel actions. C1, retirements. A, professional staff, Mr. Christopher Gorson. He's been with the district since twenty twelve. And I would like to thank Mr. Gorson for his years of service. And the second retirement, it's Kim Morrison, an English teacher at the high school who has been with the district since two thousand and three. And I would like to just thank both of them for their years of service with the district. The motion is to approve the retirements as indicated above. C2, resignations. Professional staff support staff. C3, appointments. Please note the appointments will appear on the agenda prior to the business meeting after the Board of School Directors has met an executive session to discuss all appointments. C4, leaves of absence. And that concludes my, my report.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the school board directors?
I don't have a question, but I do want to bring something up where I think that we could possibly take a look at in the future. For when we discuss our retirements, I noticed that, you know, certain schools may do different things for certain retired teachers. And I know it may be, you know, maybe the teachers put it together. I'm not sure how it goes. But I would just say that maybe in the future, we can develop some type of tradition that we could do for every teacher that retires, just so no one can feel like they're slighted or anything of that nature. Just as something I just wanted to put out there, if we can start a tradition, something maybe we can think about next year, not in the middle of COVID, but just saying in general, some type of tradition we could start with teachers that are retiring, so they don't feel so, you know, left out at times.
That has been, that has been noted, Ms. Boykins.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mo. Of course, we do have our annual retirement dinner, which is held in June of each year. We recognize retirees with a nice dinner and a, and a nice gift, and it's a very nice evening. Unfortunately, we weren't able to do it this past June because of the COVID. But hopefully that will be an event that we can continue and look at and see there's ways to improve it. And hopefully we'll be able to have our event this year, this coming June. But thanks, Mo.
No problem.
Any other questions, questions or comments from school board directors? Any questions from the public? Can we make the, I'm sorry, I want to make sure I'm using the right name. Can we supply a link to the ACID MOA, please? I believe that's a public document.
Yes, I will drop it in right now.
Thank you. Mr. Pardini, we're going to put the document regarding ACID into the chat, so you can review it. It specifically answers your question. Okay, we do not have any property committee agenda, Mr. Tong, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, budget and finance. E1, treasures report. E2, list of bills. E3, audit report for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty. And E4, twenty twenty-one property tax assessment appeals. Any questions from the Board of School Board Directors on that?
There's a E5 as well.
Whoops. Sorry, E5, tax collectors compensation. Thank you, Mr. Cuff. Any questions from the Board of School Board Directors? I heartily congratulations, Mr. Cuff, for clearing the audit two years in a row. So thank you very much, Mr. Cuff. I know that's not easy. Any questions from the public regarding the budget committee agenda? Okay, Ms. Hopkins, the policy committee agenda, please?
Yes, ma'am. F1, second reading of policy three seventeen point two, which is the employee code of ethics. And the motion is to approve the second reading and adoption of the William Penn School District policy number three one seven point two, employee code of ethics, to enter such reading into the minutes.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the Board of School Board Directors on the policy committee agenda? Seeing none. Ms. Lewis has a question. Can we let her speak, please? Hello, Ms. Lewis.
Good evening, and good evening, everyone. I have one question about the policy that's being read. The one piece of the policy, and I don't have it in front of me, but the one piece that I remember from the policy was that the word agents wasn't defined. And the reason why, the reason why I'm asking for the word agents to be defined and to make sure that includes every agent, and we know what it is because we know what agents are, and this is, this is what we do. However, I want to make sure that that is defined because in the past with dealing with policy, because certain words weren't defined, we had long conversations and many issues with that. So I'm just curious to know if we can define agents, or is that something that can be put into? And I can give an example. I don't think it's necessary, but I can give an example. So, but, and if you would like an example, please ask me. I'm okay with that. But I just want to make it that way. I'm sorry?
Ms. Lewis, this is Dr. because I clearly understand what you're saying, and we will definitely incorporate that.
Thank you very, very much.
No, you're welcome.
And Ms. Lewis, just FYI, I did hear you, and Ms. Stewart and I were having a meeting tonight after this meeting to discuss your, your request. And just in case you want to know, it's in Section C under, oops, I just had it too. Section C, wait a minute, I got to pull it back up. Section C under spending and contracting activities, and it's under bullet point number one.
Okay. And agents is defined under bullet point.
Not defined yet, and that's what the, that's the conversation her and I were supposed to have after this meeting.
All right, phenomenal. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Any other questions from attendees? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hopkins.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, that is it. We will see you next Monday, six thirty via Zoom. I just want to make sure. Okay. All right, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone against? Have a great night. Mask up. See you, see you soon.